Okidoki, resolution for annual, I'm sorry, what happened? Resolution for annual school election and budget vote ballot. The Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the annual school election and budget vote ballot notice of annual election and budget vote for the Baldwin Union Free School District to take place on May 17th, 2016, and further resolved that the district clerk is hereby authorized to take all necessary steps to publicize the notice as attached.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeRusko. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Mrs. DeRusko?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving to item number 13. Nomination of member of Board of BOCs. The Board of Education, okay, wait, so do I need to, I need to kind of fill out, does anybody have any nominee before we go through the resolution? We kind of need to talk about who we want to put in that.
There were three spots.
We received information from BA Sean and Fran Langsner, right? The additional person whose seat is also up is Ron Ellerby, who's in Freeport. And I'm actually comfortable nominating all three of those people to take back their seats if anybody else, if everyone else is okay with that. Okay, so does anybody else have any questions or comments on that? Annie?
Uh, I don't have none. It's fine.
It's fine? Okay. Ms. Libora, me, okay. So then I'm going to, can we get the, I just need to make sure I have Fran's. Okay, so I'm going to read the nomination of the member of the Board of BOCs. The Board of Education, as a component district of the Board of Cooperative Educational Services of Nassau County, BOCs nominates BA Sean, Fran Langsner, and Ron Ellerby as members of the BOC board as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Since we kind of had the discussion beforehand, I guess we can just go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain? Hold on, I have one upstairs, one upstairs. Let's look. Okay, that's okay.
I just wanted to make mention exactly that, as most of the new members know, BA Sean was a longtime member of the Baldwin Board of Education. In addition to the experience with living in Ohio, he has recently received recognition from the New York City School Board Association for reaching the level of master of board membership, as well as receiving Board Lifetime Achievement Awards, both of which represent the highest levels of state school board reputation based on hours of training and participation in working with the school board. So I can just give force noting that these people are, um, really very important.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Hagan. All right. Resolution stipulation of settlement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Baldwin Union Free School District hereby approves certain stipulation of a settlement dated at March 9th, 2016 between the Superintendent of Schools and a member of the instructional staff, employee number 00416, and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute said stipulations.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeRusko. Because this contains name of employee, we do not discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The first set of, at the Board of, oh no, first reading, the Board of Education discusses the following policies for the first reading as detailed in the Friday mailing. There's no motion, right? There's a motion for this. Okay, so we're just, we, the, so this set that we just got, this is the most recent. Okay, right, policy. You got it. Okay. But I'm going to read the policies first, that we did for the first reading. Okay, so Policy 1530, Smoking on School Grounds. Policy 1741, Homeschooled Students. Policy 1925, Interpreters for Hearing and Parents. Policy 0100, Equal Opportunity. Policy 2000, Board Operational Goals. Policy 2100, School Board Legal Status. Policy 2120, School Board Elections. Policy 2120.2, Voting Procedures. Policy 2121, Board Member Qualifications. Policy 2150, Filling Board Vacancies. Policy 2160, School District Officer and Employee Code of Ethics. Policy 2220, Board Officers. And Policy 2230, Appointed Board Officials.
There's just one correction, 1530 we received before, for our first reading, Smoking on School Grounds. That was one that we discussed, we didn't get through the whole discussion already.
Okay. So, all right, so we're gonna cross that out? So it's not a first reading? Policy 1530 is not a first reading, so we're omitting that. Okay. Okay. So, we're all good, and I think that on March 16th, are we guys all in agreement that we're gonna meet to, in a work session to go through an update and discuss?
That's 17th, correct?
March 16th, week from tonight. Okay? All right, so moving on to the next set of policies. Policies for second reading and adoption. The Board of Education approves the second reading and adopts the following policies as detailed in the Friday mailing. Policy 0110, Sexual Harassment. Policy 0150, HIV/AIDS Policy. Policy 0300, Board of Education Accountability. Policy 0310, Board Self-Evaluation. Policy 0320, Evaluation of Superintendent. Policy 1000, Community Relations Priorities. Policy 1050, Annual District Election and Budget Vote. Wait a minute. Oh, okay, never mind, sorry. Policy 1120, School District Records. Policy 1130, News Media Relations. Policy 1400, Public Concerns. Policy 1420, Inquiries About Curricula or Instructional Materials. And Policy 1500, Use of Buildings and Grounds.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeRusko. So, we're all set with this? In terms of everything came back?
So we don't need to do it, we're done with this set.
We're done with this set. Everything was good. Okay, because I do know, I remember we had some questions.
I don't know if this is a question.
Okay, all right. So then, since we're all set, I'm gonna, we're gonna vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain? Okay. The Board of Education approves the calendar for the 2016-17 school year as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Press. Second by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
More for my own edification. I know in New York City schools, they added the two religious. We don't have to deal with that, it's just not an issue. It's not like a cultural, a Chinese New Year and a Muslim holiday.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, do we have anything under other?
I'd like to do a quick BEA update, BA. No confusion, no relation. We had our BA executive session toward the end of February, and the, I mean, I've said this before, so I'm repeating myself, the work that these groups are doing is just really, really impressive. And I'm, again, very much looking forward to the reports that we're getting, and I think the community will be incredibly satisfied when you all show up at the BEA general meeting in May, 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 June? May or June? Well, I'll have announcements next time, next board meeting. One thing I will mention, the Educational Trends Committee met with our Director of Technology, and they were just so incredibly impressive, so pat on the back, they did a good job of hiring down. Yeah, and the Budget Advisory Committee, I have very few notes on school and community relations, I'm sorry, not that, but Budget Advisory Committee has heard back from a number of schools on the island, they are continuing to reach out, but they talked, there were a couple that were mentioned, Manhasset and Port Washington, that they have foundations, some have, I think, more than one foundation, one has a foundation just specifically for the arts, so there's a lot of information out there about foundations, so I'm really looking forward to what the committee will come back to in terms of recommendations for those issues, and that's all I have.
Okay. We have a guest who we just approved, your nomination for BOC's board. BA Sean is here in his capacity as NISBA Area 11 Director. I think he's here to present some awards or something, is what I heard?
I am.
Okay. Go right ahead.
The rest of the board?
Sure.
I don't think I need a phone yet. Or a microphone. But, uh, okay. This read said, "I am your Area 11 Director." That means that I am the representative to the NISBA Board from Nassau County, and conversely, the Board's representative to Nassau County. And you know, New York State is the only state that requires any elected official to contain training as part of their service, and New York State's school board members must attend training. The School Boards Association is one of the primary providers of that training among many things. So, we recognize, the School Boards Association recognizes what it takes for continuous professional development, which is something that has proponents of education for the app. So, it's with pleasure that I give Mrs. Annie Dorsecas.
What?
The rest.
I thought you were professional, BA.
Her first, her first award. This is the Board Achievement Award.
Thank you.
As you know, being a board member requires management and control, and you are best ensuring that. And if he hasn't been studying enough, Mr. Joel Press also receives the Board Excellence Award. Do you want to come in front? Master. And in addition, in addition to the certificate, you have a voucher worth one in-person or online training.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sean. I know, I probably could speak for everyone up here, we, I think, I could say, I'll just speak for myself, and people can join in on the AM Inquirer if they wanted to there. We do the work because it's good work, and there's work that needs to be done. It's nice to receive awards and acknowledgement, but as I was speaking to someone else today about other awards that I've received this year, you don't do it for the awards, but it's nice to hear while you're alive, the good that you're doing, because when you're in, you know, in the casket, you can't hear it. It's usually when people tell you, like, "Oh, she was so good, he was great, he did this, he did that," and we're in the casket or in there, and so it's nice to hear that we're doing good work while we can hear it, so thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, I think that, oh, we have one more, right? Oh, got another one session. Okay, so let me just go through important, does anybody else have anything under other? No? Okay, so let me.
No? No, not necessarily.
No?
No. I don't want her to be nervous, I think she's had enough going on.
Okay. But, okay, so we're gonna go on. Important dates, so, March, Friday, March 11th, 8:28, Apple Creek Cohoberg Tribe is the send-off for our boys' basketball team. Schools are closed for elementary students on March 18th for parent-teacher conferences. We have our first spring recess, Thursday, March 24th through Monday, March 28th. Suzaco the Musical begins on Thursday, March 31st, 3:30 PM at the middle school, Friday, April 1st, 7:00 PM at the middle school, and then Saturday, April 2nd, 7:00 PM at the middle school. We also have the PTA Legislative Forum, which is taking place on March 31st, 7:30 PM at the high school. And our next, oh, we have, as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna have a budget work session, not a budget work session, I'm so used to saying that, we're having a work session on March 16th to work on policies, this is so much fun, you guys wanna be there, don't wanna miss it. And last but not least, we have the Board of, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on Wednesday, April 13th, 8:00 PM at the district office. So, I'm going to open the floor for our second round of comments and questions, we have a light audience, so, no, I haven't heard. It would be nice. I'm gonna be still opening a lot. All right, oh, and same rules apply as the first comment section, name, address, in case we get back to you, no personnel issues or children issues discussed in public, respectful, you know, all the things that we normally go through. Thank you.
Sasha Wilder, 655 St. Luke's Place. I just have a concern about the transportation at the middle school. A few times over the last couple of weeks, the buses have been having to turn around and go back to the middle school because of some inappropriate behavior of some of the students on the bus. And I can understand that you would wanna take care of that issue, however, there are many other children that are on the bus trying to get home, which is causing some stress in my household because my daughter has missed, or has been late for a tutoring session, and I kinda do give a large amount of leeway for that bus, but sometimes when it gets back to the middle school, a security guard doesn't come out right away, so they sit there for quite a while with the child still on the bus. And the other issue is that sometimes I have my older daughter coming home to take care of my younger child so that I can stay at work and do some work, and if she doesn't get home, then I need to leave to go do that. The other thing, as a teacher of, in an elementary school, a lot of those kids are coming to the elementary schools from the middle school to pick up younger siblings, and so if the bus turns around, they're not getting to the elementary school in enough time to pick up a student, so therefore there's a large amount of children waiting in the office. So I don't know if there's something else that can be done, perhaps taking the name of the child and having it dealt with the next day, or not letting that child get off, but the rest of the children get off, I don't know, but I think there needs to be something done about that because it's not just affecting my child, I'm seeing it's affecting other children, so if there's some way that we can look into that, I would appreciate it.
Mrs. Wilder, can I just ask a quick question? Have you had this conversation with Mr. Marr?
I didn't, because I didn't know, like, Mr. Marr never comes out to the bus, from what I've been told by my daughter, it's the security officers that are doing that, and I didn't know, I just assumed maybe it was transportation that makes that rule that the bus driver needs to turn around, or perhaps it's the bus driver that makes the rule. I didn't really know where to go with the information, and I'm here, so.
Okay, I mean.
You win.
No, I'm just asking, because you know, you know, we know, the.
Right.
It's kind of tricky to determine what the protocol is on this.
Right, and I really didn't know where, who makes that rule.
Okay.
The principal, okay, so then I will take it there, and if I don't get anywhere there, I will be back again.
Thank you, appreciate that.
If you don't, if you don't get anywhere, then the next staff will be called into the board. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Robert Kugelmais, 979 Van Buren Street. I've got about four topics, new material, and about eight minutes it should take. Before that, though, I just want to address one remark where a board member invoked the state controller in guidance for the budget, nothing could be farther from the truth. In 2010, Thomas DiNapoli reamed this school district for over-budgeting for $17 million over a four-year period. You have, you have thumbed your nose at the state controller, in the last two years you've over-budgeted by $18 million, so your conduct continues, DiNapoli considers that a fraud on the people of your school district, and that's the reason why the state legislator had to pass a 2% tax cap to rein in your little governments like you, which are just poisoning the state. Now, on the website, the superintendent's worked hard to improve the website, and she has, I've seen a lot of websites, and one thing that's holding it back is, and I've seen about 95% of the New York State websites, that you can directly contact board members, they provide, are there telephone numbers, upstate, they provide telephone numbers, downstate here, they provide email addresses where a resident or anybody can reach a board member directly, and for proof of that, you can just check the websites of Lindenhurst, Mineola, Glen Cove, and Half Hollow Hills. Okay, 100%, you can reach board members in those school districts, so don't take my word for it. So we're still operating in the days of the telegraph, you know, where we have this modern communication, one to the website. Okay. Now, I'm gonna talk again about the Baldwin brand, new information. Internships is not gonna be the Baldwin brand, because you're late to the game. New York City has been doing collaborations with internships and industry for a long time. You just ask your superintendent about that, or you can ask your board member about August Martin High School, which has a legal academy and a communication academy, and they've had these academies going back to World War II. So, that's not gonna be our brand. The collaboratory is just a blip, it's just a widely, it's not a widely applicable model. Your brand is fiscal acuity, and I know it's ironic to hear it from me, because I think you're fools, but of course you're among greater fools, so you're doing well among the greater fools. Your cup runneth over, and what you could do is, for the benefit of our town, because I know we're trying to rev up this town a little bit, is a 5% tax cut. You can easily afford it, you could afford one this year, last year, next year, your cup runneth over, you know you do, your stress level is zero, it's really about minus eight, you don't know where to put your reserves. You had a $10 million budget surplus last year, and instead of raising the appropriated fund balance to next year, you lowered it from 3.1 to 2.5, the old 2.5 that you kept on passing on. There's no excuse for that. Okay, so, and that's the right thing to do, is to give people a tax cut if you really care about the low-well members of our school district. Tell them for your past misdeeds, it's the right thing to do, but you would get page one in Newsday, that would be a story, because all these school districts say, "Jim and so forth," they're under stress, stress is a big problem throughout the state, a lot of governments are under stress, and here you are, your cup runneth over. So you have something to teach the rest of Long Island and the rest of New York. Now, and you could, you could, you could do it conceivably every year, because if you just stop feather bedding teachers with low enrollments, you streamline your foreign language, there's lots of ways you can cut costs, and you have to push back on these exorbitant costs of our teachers and our administrators. So, fiscal acuity would make you a star, because that's a model that can apply to every school district throughout the state. If you wanna establish a Baldwin brand, and you wanna be a star, fiscal acuity is your guide. Now, what would make you a superstar is raising your score levels, you're mad, right now you're in the bottom quartile in math. I've got a plan, at no cost to the school district, to raise you to the second quartile in two to three years, and you could do that, and I know how to do it. That would make you a superstar, because you're showing fiscal acuity and you're raising your grades. Now, Dr. Rogers can't do that in sci-fi, he started on third base halfway home, he's a trust fund baby, you know, he just took over a good school district, or a well-performing school district, so enough for the Baldwin brand. The next thing I'd like to address is the superintendent's contract. I imagine you're starting to work on that, I don't think you'd leave her as a lame duck for, in her third year. Now, you have, we need to deflate the salaries in our school district, it's ridiculous. I know a board member compares it, they're competitive. I know a board member compares it, they're competitive to other Nassau County schools, only the public schools. The parochial schools, they make half of what you, you make. The, uh, the Queens teachers, who live in, in Baldwin, they make a third less than their cousins here, their rich cousins in Baldwin, the teachers who live and work here in Baldwin or don't, and so forth. So, we got plenty of teachers, teachers are a dime a dozen, this is totally an artificial market, you know that, uh, it's not a question of getting good teachers, we know ninety-five percent of the teachers in New York are effective, right? That's what we've been told, so I'll stipulate that, they're all good. Everybody loves their teachers, they love them in Nebraska, they love them in Seaford, they love them in Lynbrook, I mean, they know them, so they like them. Okay. But, the costs are too much. So, we gotta start that with leadership at the top, so this is what I suggest as, uh, the, uh, for the, our superintendent. Uh, first of all, you started at too high, at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. New Jersey, the limit is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. In Delaware, which is in Megalopolis, a superintendent with three high schools, three high schools makes less than our, uh, our principals at Steel School, or at, uh, or Brookside, or whatever. So, we're way out of line there. I mean, ten years ago, you were playing, you were paying Dr. Kathy Weiss three hundred thousand dollars, and we're still paying for that through the pension costs. See, you're way out of line, uh, and you know that. Uh, it's just, uh, the unions have totally cleaned your clock, and you just capitulate and collude with them to shake down the state for more money, and to shake the residents down for more money. Okay. So what I'm suggesting is, you offer her a contract, uh, instead of a three-year contract, offer her a five-year contract, two hundred thousand dollars a year, you're not gonna go broke on two hundred thousand dollars a year, plus she gets another sixty thousand dollars in benefits, and her best benefit is she gets three months off a year, five weeks during the school year, four weeks during the summer, and another three weeks of, uh, paid sick days and so forth. So, these are ridiculous contracts you've given to all these teachers, I mean, the teachers and the administrators, and we need leadership at the top, you've got to deflate these salaries. These people are not getting three weeks off a year, they're getting three months off a year, four months off a year, and they're still getting paid extremely well. Okay. Uh, so you can give her a, a five-year, two hundred thousand dollar contract, lock her in, write a good contract, uh, because it seems that superintendents can get out of that contract real easy. The one up in Northport did in the middle of her contract, and of course, Canel did too. Not that we miss him. Okay, so, that's a five-year contract, and give her a hundred thousand dollars in discretionary money so she can work on programs that she wants to do. And that'll tell you whether we got a mercenary here, or we got an educator. Uh, otherwise, you can just offer her a, a three-year, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar contract, and that'll bring the governor and the state, uh, superintendent down to visit you, because they'll love you for it. And it's not a bad idea to have a governor loving you. And you can give her some discretionary money there, too. Okay, so that's it on the superintendent's contract, and the last thing I want to discuss is pilots and shortages, okay? I first discussed that last year with our, um, Synergy, the gym, the fitness gym, because I know you're, you're suing Nassau County for a hundred thousand dollar shortage that you didn't get from them, but we have a shortage of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from Synergy Gym. They got out of paying school taxes, which means the rest of us, the eight thousand other households in Baldwin, has to empty up twenty dollars apiece to make up for the hundred and sixty thousand dollars that Synergy isn't paying. So, uh, just a, just a, um, just a, uh, just to mention that again, let's get a pilot from Synergy, we could, eh, expand the Saturday Night Live program to the south part of our town, and they'll provide services in their gym for our kids, so they have something to do on Saturday night, the girls and the guys. Okay. And the other pilot I think we should get is from a board member, and, uh, the tax relief would be for our board members, too. We've got two board members up for election now, that, that pay ninety-nine hundred dollars on their homes. That's this year's, uh, tax assessment on their homes. That's the most, ninety-nine hundred dollars, two of them, and, uh, that's what the county assessed on their homes. Yeah? Ninety-eight seventy-two, Joel.
Uh, hold on, hold on.
It's, I got it right off of the Nassau County assessment.
Listen, this is not the forum to talk about people's personal tax bills. So wrap up your comments, please.
Well, he was, he was on it, he was making noises to me.
No, but you...
No, no, no. This is public record, this is public record.
But what, is this the forum to discuss this?
I'll tell you the point, I'll tell you the point, I'll tell you the point.
Um, I think you're getting a little out of hand here.
No, I just wanna continue.
So wrap it up, please.
Okay. So, we need a pilot...
Minus the personal information.
Hold it, we need a pilot...
Who are you telling to hold it?
'Cause I'm speaking, and you're interrupting me.
Oh, excuse me. But I'm the chair, and this is a business meeting.
And I'm talking about a pilot.
And we've allowed you to go on.
And a shortage.
So wrap it up, please.
We're suing for a shortage, and I, I want a shortage from one of our board members, the one with the biggest house...
Excuse me?
The highest success house pays twenty-five hundred dollars less, and Madam President, you've got a house that's half the size of her house...
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
You pay a thousand dollars more than she does, your house is half her size. How about a shortage there, Madam President?
Mr. Press, Mrs. O'Hagan?
She pays, she pays the least, and has the biggest house, the mansion in Baldwin...